Good evening, welcome to our study session. We're going to go ahead and get started because tonight's a very, very important information that we're going to discuss. We have with us tonight Maggie Jackson, and she is with the Canadian County Health Department. What else? Come and introduce yourself Maggie. Maggie is on our COVID team. Our COVID team meets every other week, and Maggie is just a plethora of information for us. And I asked her to come tonight to kind of tell us what's going on with COVID, about the vaccines, the process, and just to give us an update for Canadian County. So, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. So, my title's the Community Engagement and Planning Director. We have an eight-county district with the Health Department, so we're called District Two. So, I serve Canadian County. And I brought a lot of information to study because it's a study session, so it's way too much. Don't plan on going through every slide, but just brought them as reference for just if the questions come up. So, I wanted to just answer questions about the vaccine distribution that we are working on right now. That's our top priority. And I also brought Heather Ward with me. She's our health educator for Canadian County. And so, I needed some backup in case I missed something or needed to follow up on a question. So, she is here to support us as well. So, vaccine information, and then also, we are still recommending the non-pharmaceutical mitigation efforts for COVID-19, including wearing a mask, socially distancing, and of course, washing your hands and all those things we know. So, I brought some information about that as well. So, in my slides, I'll just get going. On this first one, I just wanted to give a visual of the trend that we have had in our county. We have seen quite a large spike at the end of November. We had, you know, surge in our hospitals. We had surges across the state, really. And fortunately, we think we saw a little uptick from Thanksgiving, and then it's been slowly declining, but we have yet to see what Christmas and New Year's might have done. So, we just wanted to share that's the trend. That purple line gives us the average of what we're seeing in our trends. So, we've had 11,448 total cases. Of course, 10,000 are recovered, so we're at 1,332 active cases in the county, and Yukon has 599 active cases. We've had 18 deaths in Yukon, and we've had 53 deaths in Canadian County. I have, this number's a little bit delayed, but I have 413 people have been hospitalized. So, that's hovering just under 4% of our cases end up going to the hospital. That is actually lower, Canadian County is lower than the rest of the state, which is fortunate. You know, lots of people are going to the hospital, but the percentage of our total cases is lower. And the next slide just shows you, this is the chart that the schools have referenced. It's called the COVID Alert System. We're still looking at that. It gets updated on Fridays, but it just shows the large spike and the ups and downs we've seen in the last month or two. I'll just jump into the vaccine. This is our top priority in public health right now. So, towards the middle of December, we learned, we've known it's coming for quite a while, but in the middle of December, we had plans in place. We were able to vaccinate our hospital folks at Canadian Valley and also in Mustang and El Reno before Christmas. So, hospital workers were able to be in that first group. And it's been a privilege to be a part of this momentous, historical challenge. And it is, it's just been encouraging. Being in, being at Canadian Valley, it was, there was, you know, energy that there's hope that we are going to see this thing turn downward, and things are going to get better. So, it's been so encouraging. Lately, we are now in Phase Two. So, last week, we were, as a state, moved into Phase Two of vaccinations. So, that first group was hospital workers and those nursing homes. Those were our first priorities. And the State Health Department was tasked with all of our hospital frontline inpatient caregivers. And there's a federal program taking care of our nursing homes. There were some that didn't get signed up, but CVS and Walgreens are still in the process of vaccinating our nursing homes. So, they should be all scheduled if they haven't received their vaccine yet. So, we've moved to Phase Two. So, last week, on Thursday, we were able to do two very large events. We've done several large events now, but we did, with our district, we have received, we've received shipments of Pfizer vaccine as well as Moderna vaccine. And for our eight-county district, we've administered almost, today we should have exceeded 6,000 doses within those eight counties, but the majority of that has been here in Canadian County. So, that's just, it's really exciting. So, we have, our next big event here in the county is Friday at Redlands Community College. We have already filled up. It's filled up so fast. And it is only available to, we still can do hospital workers that might have been missed, but it's for healthcare workers, first responders, and now we're open to any adult over 65. So, that's a large group, a large population, and a population that has transportation challenges and mobility challenges at times, may not have access to the Internet. So, we're doing our best to get as much vaccine as we can out to that group and our other populations while also trying to work with those barriers. We've done that by making, we made a sign-up that filled up within an hour, but next week's sign-up should be available tomorrow at 1:00, and it will be for the following Friday. And that is going to be, we're going to have phone appointments available too this week. So, people can also call either Canadian County Health Department, and they can make an appointment that way. So, thank you for sharing that. That's the post we put on Facebook to give just an update that we're sorry it filled up so quickly. And just if any public is listening, anybody who calls the Health Department, we're just asking everybody for patience, and we want to get this vaccine out to as many people as quickly as we can. We are going to start implementing appointments at the Health Department as well. That is not ready yet. It will be ready in the next week or two. I put some information, sorry, it's a couple slides back, but there will be, there was a press conference today, there's going to be a Vaccine Finder app. These are some bullet points about it. It's going to be on the State Health Department website, and there's going to be a map where people can access vaccine distribution sites across the state nearest to them. So, that will eventually include other providers in addition to the Health Department. It does not yet. And it is not available until Thursday. So, we've been ready to go with our vaccine before that app was available, but it's coming, and it will be a convenient way for people to access vaccine online. So, we're looking forward to that as soon as it comes out. So, we have just continued to stay in touch. We, I don't know about Facebook, it's not my favorite thing, but it is the first place that we're going to post the sign-up links. It's just an easy landing page. It's easier to update than our website. So, we're just encouraging people to find the link that way, and then they can also call both of our Health Department sites. So, we have been administering, here in Canadian County, we've been mostly using the Pfizer vaccine. That is currently being stored for our district in Enid, where we have an ultra-cold storage freezer right outside my office. And so, that's been donated by the, I think it was the Noble, oh, I don't want to say it wrong, but it was donated to the Health Department. So, we're really glad we have ultra-cold storage in our Health Department that we're able to receive Pfizer vaccine, continue to receive shipments, and get it out to all of our locations. And then, in some of our other counties, you might receive Moderna vaccine. We have found that they are very similar in their side effects and their, you know, their formulations. So, we're not able to offer people a choice of which vaccine they get at this point. The logistics are very difficult. So, we have some people that are already ready for their second dose that's going to be happening this week. This is also very challenging because we're trying to get new vaccine out while also following up with second dose. So, we are working out the kinks, and we're getting everybody called or emailed this week to follow up with their second dose. So, that's the basics on the vaccine. If there are any questions, I would do my best.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I actually have three or four, but I'm going to try to ask the short ones. Okay. So, if, well, let me start with this one. If someone has concerns about whether the vaccine is safe, or maybe safe for them individually or whatever, what's the best resource where they can find that, like the trial data? Because everybody's got somewhere to say, you know, some opinion on it, but what's the best place to say, "Go look here, you can see the actual results of the trials"?
Yes. The both manufacturers have published their, all their data, and those are on their respective websites. We also recommend, the FDA will have summaries of those trials, so the FDA website is another place you can look. And then, every person that comes for a vaccine receives a packet of information of the potential side effects and what we know so far. There's also, it's helpful for special groups, for instance, pregnant women. The American College of Obstetrics, the ACOG, Obstetrics and Gynecology, they put out some FAQs for pregnant women or people considering becoming pregnant. And so, places like that, the American Academy of, I'm sorry, not Pediatrics, the ACOG is the one I've referenced a lot because a lot of women have asked me about that.
Okay.
Yeah, so those are the places I recommend going to.
If a, do we know the real, like the, has this answer been studied? If a person's had the virus, do they need the vaccine? And if they do, can, could you briefly tell us why that would be the case?
Sure. We are recommending, if you've been infected with COVID-19 or tested positive, that you receive the vaccine. We think it will offer you a more durable immunity than just the antibodies from becoming ill. Right now, the general advice is about three months after you've had COVID-19, you have some kind of immunity, you would not have to quarantine, you should have some protective benefit. But from what we know now, which is still limited with the timeframe that this virus has been studied, is that people could potentially become reinfected. We've seen it happen. It's not largely documented, but we have cases of people that have been reinfected. So, and then, we believe that the way the vaccine works, it, you know, teaches your body how to respond to that virus in a stronger way than the antibodies you might receive from being infected. So, we recommend it. If you have recently been tested positive, then we recommend your symptoms be mostly better. Some symptoms linger, so we still recommend you come get that vaccine.
Okay. I guess I'll skip one of my questions, but a question I've had a hard time finding data, maybe I'm not looking in the right spot, but when we talk about positive cases in Yukon, are we talking about the 73099 zip code? Or are we talking about Yukon city limits?
That data is collected from the address of the positive lab test. So, someone might have, you know, they're going to put their county, their city, and their zip code. And because those boundaries are not exact, you are going to have some places where they don't match up exactly, you know?
On the website, though, it states Yukon, and it states county, Yukon, and 73099. So, you can check those numbers.
In my previous presentation, I included the zip code, but I didn't here, but it is available on the Health Department website.
Do you get that daily?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Rick, did you have some?
Yeah, I've had a lot of residents come to me and ask me, "Do the hospitals get funds because someone has died of COVID in their hospital?"
That's a question we've heard before, and I don't feel like I can speak for the hospitals. What I've heard is that there's codes for deaths that receive different reimbursements, and that there is a code for COVID-19. I don't know how to explain it right. I would let them speak for themselves on that one.
Okay. I've been having some people tell me that the death certificate is saying COVID, and they're rarely not dying of COVID. Have you seen a downturn of cancer victims and heart attacks?
Those are still the leading causes of death. Heart diseases are still our number-one cause of death. We're still concerned about it. When a death is reported in a hospital, it has to be certified by the coroner's office, and so that process, you know, it takes a little bit of time, and it takes some review. So, the physician is going to list the comorbidities or the other conditions that person had, but they will say the cause of death, what ended up, you know, leading that person. So, we're seeing, when a death is reported, that person might have had diabetes, they might have had heart disease, but they have died from complications due to COVID-19. Oftentimes, the person has had COVID, but then they're in the hospital with lingering pneumonia, with other, they have the, they call it the cytokine storm. I'm not a physician, so they could speak much better on this subject. But then, that death is the result of the virus and the complications in the body following the virus.
Is the vaccine getting to the state and not going to the county? Is that the delay, or is it getting to the county and then it's delayed? I know there's a delay someplace because we've been sitting on a lot of vaccines, I understand.
We, so I can only speak for our district, but we have a goal of getting at least 50% of the vaccine we receive out every week. So, you know, there was the holidays, we had Christmas, and, but I had, we had staff working Christmas Eve, and we weren't going to wait four days to not do anything. So, in our district, which is eight counties, we administered all the Pfizer vaccine we got within the first two weeks. And then, we received, I think it was 4,400 doses of Moderna. I don't remember the date we got it, but we've given out at least half of it. So, in terms of delays, I think the only thing right now would be, we had Christmas Day off, and I know that the limit, the main limitation we have is staff. So, when we do an event, it's all hands on deck. We've got to cancel other things, and we are asking for volunteers. So, staff is our biggest limitation. So, if you are a healthcare provider, you can sign up at the OKMRC.org to be a volunteer, and we will email you, and we will tell you where we need help. So, staff is our only limitation. But it's coming to our districts, and we have an event, we have an eight-county district, we have vaccine going to each county minimum once a week.
And it takes time to process those people. I mean, how many did we have that day?
So.
Was it New Year's Eve? How many did we have went through?
New Year's Eve, we did some nursing homes on New Year's, on New Year's Eve.
What day did we, was it Wednesday or Thursday?
So, on Monday in Enid, we did around 1,400. Yukon, on December 1st, we did about 1,200.
31st, yeah.
31st?
Oh, my gosh, that wasn't in my mind.
1,200, yeah.
She pulled me out of trenches. And I know that December 31st, when you said we got 1,200, I mean, it was from 8:00 to 5:00, and they never stopped. They, I mean, it just takes time to process people through.
Yes. We are trying to do even more than that next time, but yes, we have, for Friday, we have 1,200 appointment slots again.
And we try to do 50 vaccinations within 15 minutes.
Yeah.
I never saw a single person idle.
Yeah. So, our goal is to have no delays and to get it into as many hands as we can. We have a huge demand. People are calling off the charts, and we have lots of people, you know, who are a high priority, and we want to get them in as quickly as we can.
Because I called yesterday morning, haven't got a call back yet.
Yeah.
I know you guys have been busy, but I'm 73, so I'm wondering when I should be getting my shot.
Yes. So, we tried, our goal is to share with the newspapers and on our Facebook page.
Doesn't do Facebook, I'll call.
Yes. We definitely, so we're trying to ask people to wait until tomorrow at 1:00 to call because we had no ability to sign up today. So, I'm sorry about that. We had a lot of people put me on a waiting list, you know, and we were not able to do that. So, we're, once we have appointments at the Health Department, then we'll be liable to do a waiting list. So, that could be as soon as next week. We're going to accommodate that.
All right. We're going to let you go on because you have so much to say. I wish we had more time. So, keep going.
Yes. Just later, earlier in December, we just discussed that across the state. It is a hot topic. Many communities have passed mask mandates. And so, I just provided you all with the research that we are still recommending policies for promoting masks in businesses and schools and in communities. So, this is just a series of studies and data of why we have the recommendation to continue to wear masks and to put it into policy. I just had a few slides just reminding, you may have seen, you know, this way too much, but that COVID-19 is spread by people without symptoms. And so, I just included this little chart because it just shows that you're, the virus builds in your body, and you are contagious before you have symptoms. So, that's just the premise of the masks, that we know that people can be spreading it before they know they've been exposed or could infect others. There's way too much information, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but these are just some slides to reiterate how many people can spread COVID without symptoms. So, I put this little cartoon in here just because it shows how many, you know, 48 hours before you would even feel sick, you would be contagious. Thank you for sharing that. So, we have just more data now on how the infection is spread. So, I have shared this a lot, just, this is a graph, the top blue dots are people singing loudly, and then it goes down to breathing, and this is how many particles are expelled when someone is doing those activities. So, it's just another reminder that there are, the virus is very, very small, but it is carried on larger droplets. So, the mask does not block every particle from leaving, but it blocks some of those larger ones. So, we have three ways that we analyze data to understand what we know now. We have laboratory experiments about masks and the emission of the respiratory particles, and we look at epidemiological investigations. So, these are closed groups where an outbreak happened in a kind of controlled setting. So, a lot of those are examples of, you know, 1,000 people or so on a cruise ship or in this prison setting, where it's, where you can really look at a population and what happened, and who was wearing a mask and who wasn't. And then, we look at population level, like community studies. So, these can be in a, some of them are from like a hospital system or a city or a state. These are, there's so many variables, you know. Also, we are doing social distancing, we're limiting schools, we're closing businesses in some places still. And fortunately, as a business owner myself, I am, just know that of all the non-pharmaceutical ways we can prevent COVID-19, wearing a mask is the one that doesn't harm businesses. So, that's the one that I've brought information on today. So, there's, this is way too much. But these are the series of lab studies. We have, this is an example of when a closed group of people who are very close together at a hair salon, you might have seen this before, that when all the clients and the salon stylist, whatever, was wearing a mask, that no one became infected. So, we have a lot of research on situations like that. Keep going through. There's way too much information, but I'm happy to describe any of the studies in more depth. I wanted to skip on through to, we'll go all the way to, thank you for skipping ahead with me. There's just a lot of information. This is, okay, in the slide I gave to you was for Oklahoma, so I just wanted to share what's happening in Oklahoma. The one that you have was from December, and I'm sorry I forgot to update it. But I have in front of me, every week, our state epidemiologist puts out a report on data across the state of what's going on with COVID-19. And they've been following, it's not a scientific rigorous study, but just following communities that implemented a mask policy prior to October, those who did more recently in November or so, and those who have not implemented it. And they have still continued to see there was less of an effect, there was a large effect in the beginning. In the beginning, a mask policy significantly reduced the rate that COVID-19 spread in that community. So, it's still spread, it's still happened. We still know that when people sit at a restaurant, take their mask off, it doesn't fix everything, but it slowed it down. So, when our hospitals were surging, I know they're still very busy, we're still looking to see what happens after Christmas and New Year's, we were, you know, showing that if 4% of people that become infected with COVID-19 go to the hospital, we can slow that rate down, we can slow the rate of hospitalization. So, I'm happy to share this updated one. It was from last week, but it showed an 11% difference in the incidence of new cases with communities that had a mask policy and those that didn't. So, lots of information here. There was a recent Danish clinical trial that showed that if people were told to wear a mask, but no one else around them was, that it did not offer much protective benefit to the wearer. So, that's important to note because if, it helps you somewhat, but if you're the only one in the room and no one else is wearing a mask, it may not protect you. So, those who feel, you know, "This is my choice to wear a mask, I want to protect myself," they may not be as protected if it's not a normalized community thing. And we've seen, it's also just continuing to learn, but in Kansas, the state implemented a mask mandate. At the same time, some counties opted in and some opted out. And the counties that implemented it, they decreased their rate of new cases by 6%, and those that did not increased by 100%. So, that was just a comparison that we could do. There were other factors, like most of the mask mandates were in more urban areas where people are even more crowded. So, it offered even that much more protective benefit. All right. So, I just share, you know, it's something we can continue to answer questions, there's a lot of research. I know it's a very hot topic. I've been in the middle of it for a few weeks, a few months now, and, but I just want to be a helpful resource for information on why we make that recommendation and why it could help slow the spread of COVID-19. The question I'm getting a lot now is that with the vaccine, we're going to have to stop wearing a mask? And I think people probably will, but we are still recommending it because we know it is very effective. Both vaccines are effective at preventing you from becoming sick with COVID-19, but we don't have enough information, and you still have the potential, if you get the vaccine, to have the virus and transmit it to someone else. So, we just don't have enough of that herd immunity that we all want. We all want that herd immunity. And so, we are still recommending wearing a mask and watching your distance. That's not going to stop soon, so.
I thank you so much. I wish we had more time, but our time is up. Maggie is a wealth of information. If you want to talk to her, just call her, and I just enjoy all the information that you give us.
Thank you.
But thank you so much for coming tonight, and we appreciate it, and we will see you at the next vaccination party.
All right. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to take just a, can we just take a two-minute break?
Can we have a five-minute break if you'd like?
Does anybody need a break? Want to move on? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll start in five minutes. There she is. Is she okay? There she is. Is she okay?